Good evening. This is the Wareham School Committee, June 21st meeting. And the meeting is being recorded by WCTV for broadcast and not a recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. The first agenda item is the recognition of the newly retiring staff members.
And I would like to invite Mrs. Chandler and Mrs. Siemens to come forward.
So I would like to congratulate Mrs. Shelley Jensen, who's not here this evening, on retiring. She thought she could, you know, slip it in last minute and have no, uh, nothing coming her way, but of course we can't let her do that. So congratulations to Shelley. She was a fourth grade teacher at Minutet. We will miss her dearly. And Mr. Paul Gould, can you come on down, please? Mr. Gould and I have been working together for 15 years. This is my 15th year in Wareham. From the Hammond School to the East Wareham School to the Minutet Forest School. He's been our head custodian and he is retiring after many years here.
A week short of 24.
Week short of 24. I love that number, 24. So I want to congratulate Paul on his retirement. We would miss you dearly and we have a plaque for you.
I have the distinct pleasure of giving this plaque of retirement to Diana Caranto, who began her service here at Wareham Public Schools in 1998 and she's finishing her year this year. I first got to meet Diana this year when I began at Deacon School and we formed a very wonderful relationship through fashion. We share every day our outfits and talk. She was so, she has more courage than any other woman I've met at Deacon School. I praise her every day for being there and showing what she does and what a great, great community. Thank you for your service, Diana.
Would anyone like to come down and comment? Anyone in the audience? Next, we're going to have recognition of student achievements.
And I would also like to invite Mrs. Chandler to come forward again. This is from the Deacon School and Mrs. Siemens to come forward.
So I would like to call Emma McWilliams to come down, please. Emma is a fourth grade student at Minutet Forest and her teacher, Mrs. Panzoni, did a contest through the EverSource program and Emma placed third place for the short story. So we're very proud of her. She went to Boston, I think it was, to get an award and it's just amazing that she could do this. So we're very proud of you, Emma. We wanted to say congratulations in public.
At Deacon School this year, we had our students create a poster for the Garden Club. We have a few students who have earned recognition from the Garden Club for their wonderful displays. And this is a credit too to our retired art teacher, Ellen Osborne. Thank you for your tremendous work with these students. I'd like to call up Maggie Avila, grade two. Emmett Buckingham, kindergarten, oh, nope, sorry. This is Olivia Mello, grade two, for the Wareham Garden Club statewide. Andrew Evora, grade two, for the statewide poster contest. Great job, Andrew. And I also have Emmett Buckingham, a kindergarten student, who also received a first-place poster for the EverSource Challenge Contest. Is Emmett here? All right, Emmett's here too. Wonderful. I'm very, very proud of the four of you. Congratulations.
No, we have not. Okay.
Well, I along with many other people were at high school graduation. It didn't rain. I thought it was an outstanding production. The students were great. Mr. Palladino, congratulations. And I was particularly impressed with the valedictorian and salutatorian speeches. They seem to get better every year. So it was a, it was a great event. If anybody missed it, come next time.
And I thought it was very moving, very moving event too. Very well-run too. Anyone else? Okay. The minutes of the meeting of June 7th, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Moving on to the appointment of the Director of Student Services.
Yes, I would like to invite Melissa Fay to come forward. And if you'll notice a name change, Melissa, yes, thank you, recently was married and so we have not reflected that name change. We will. So, welcome. And if you could just briefly share your experience with the committee and then I'm sure they have some questions they may wish to ask.
Members of the committee, thank you very much for having me this evening. I am Melissa Fay. Getting used to saying that name still, after many years of not having to say it. I am currently one of five high school special directors for the city of Boston, Boston Public Schools. I come from a background of special education teacher, department head, school-based and central office, special ed administration. I have been in special education my entire career, so for 20 years now, and the last 11 of them have been spent as an administrator of special education. I also have a son who has special needs, which is pretty much my passion that moves me forward throughout my career, doing what's best for children. And I am also a doctoral candidate at Johnson and Wales for educational leadership.
Are there any questions? Well, I was on the, oh, sorry. I'll go last. Jeff?
So I recently read a book about...
You'll get used to them. You make faces when I speak sometimes.
So I recently read a book about how Finland handles special education. They have, in the early grades, about 50% of their kids are considered special education. They intervene tremendously well and routinely get many of those kids off of special education as a result of those interventions. You're nodding your head like you're very familiar with that approach. Is that an approach that could be taken in Wareham Public Schools?
I think it's best practice in any school system. So early intervention is key for the majority of our students. So being able to have solid foundations for them as they move up into the upper grades is crucially important, putting the correct services in place for them at that point. If we're doing our job as special educators, our job is to make sure that we provide tools for our students that allow them to be independent and allow them to overcome their disabilities and allow them to be able to generalize the skills that we teach them to be successful in the general education population. So doing our job well means that we should be exiting students from special education. So yes, I do believe that early intervention is key for any, any school system.
Did that happen in Boston?
I believe that with a district the size of Boston and the population that we serve, it is certainly something that we strive to do. We have an added caveat of having about 40% of our students be English language learners, most of them at level one or two, a lot of newcomers, a lot of students who have experienced interruptions in their education. So it makes the struggle a little bit more difficult. I think urban settings present a whole different set of issues than a suburban setting would. So I think it's something that we certainly strive to do, but not always as successfully as we would like to.
Well, you're replacing an outstanding educator and I wish you great success.
Thank you very much.
And I was on the, on the interview committee and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
And so, under Mass General Law 71B, 3A, the school committee hires a special education director, so I am recommending the appointment of Melissa Fay to the position of Director of Student Services. This would become effective August 1st, 2017.
Do I have a motion to hire Melissa Fay?
Well, I was going to, but I feel reluctant now.
Oh, come on.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Spring athletic report.
Good evening. A few of the highlights from the athletic report were, we had a state champion, Bradley Lankiewicz, in the shot put and discus, which was amazing. And he's only a junior. We're anticipating great things from him. We started a unified track team. Actually, Megan Cashner was a big push behind that and she did a great job with that, with that new thing that we're having now and it looks like it was very, very successful and we, obviously we're going to have it again next year. Boys and girls tennis teams won the sportsmanship awards and, you know, senior athletes of the year were Jovan Thomas and Shaylee Ewing. Those would have been the, you know, the highlights of the spring season.
Does anyone have any questions or remarks?
I do, actually. I have a question. The softball salary, how many coaches make up that salary?
Two.
Two? And the baseball?
Two.
Two? Okay. Thank you.
So, a remarkable GPA.
Well, that's the other thing I should have highlighted is that, and that amazes me all the time.
I confess, I am, we, girls tennis hit a all-time high and still came in second, which was infuriating, but kudos to girl softball.
It just, it, it's amazing to me, it really is. I mean, all these I've been doing sports to see the amount of kids, 135, have an 89-point something GPA. That tells you that sports is, is very big for a lot of kids and they learn how to balance school and playing sports and it's fantastic, it really is. I'm a, it's, unless it blows my mind a lot when I see that all the time.
Mr. Rodriguez would never say this, but the truth is this spring was the most remarkable spring to try and get events in. Maybe, certainly in the last decade or more, maybe longer, he did an extraordinary job and I just want to personally publicly thank him.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just want to say I enjoy reading your reports because I like the information that you get from them. I think it's very informative. I like the part that the GPA is included and I know who the eighth, that there are eighth graders involved and...
Actually, correction. Those two eighth graders were seventh graders.
Oh.
I don't break it down to seventh graders because there are some, tennis team has seventh graders.
Field hockey will have seventh graders, golf has seventh graders. Those are the three sports. And yeah, some of, so some of the eighth graders, not many, but are seventh graders too.
So we have a new data point, grade seven.
Yeah. Yeah.
They, they did a remarkable job. Thank you, Dr. Stedman.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Schwam for the Strategic and School Improvement Plan.
As we prepare, I just want to thank the administrators, the principals, all their teachers, assistant principals, and Dr. Schwam for her hard work. While there are 40-some slides, I will tell you, we started at 60-plus slides and so through their hard work and the condensing of material, you're going to see an overview of our schools. If you have questions, please, we're happy to answer whatever questions you have and we're, I just want to thank everyone because it's taken a lot of work to put this presentation together.
Today's the first day of summer for most people, anyway. But it's certainly been delightful day today and I'm very grateful that this evening has happened because now I can stop thinking about it for a little bit. But what I, what I want to say is that I want to thank you very much for providing the time for this, for you to see what's going on in our schools. It's very important work and I believe we've come up with strategies to actually have a strategic plan that's measurable and data-driven and decisions being made by the collective group of all stakeholders within Wareham Public Schools. The strategic plan was accepted by the school committee and voted upon in April of 2016. Some of you were not here during that time. I have copies of the plan. The plan is also available online should you need a copy. I have it with me and I'm happy to give that to you tonight. We had a number of meetings with various stakeholders. We started that process in March, I believe, of 2015. We met a number of times to come up with the plan and from there, this is where we've begun this process. So there are two things that we would like to do this evening and one is to indicate where we are at each school with their improvements for the year, as well as share all of the accomplishments and our plans for next year. This is the school's vision that was approved by the, or created by the Strategic Planning Committee and approved by the school committee. Our whole purpose is to provide challenging, engaging, innovative, globally-minded educational experience so that our students can have a competitive advantage with all other students in the Commonwealth. And my big goal, with all the years I have been in education, probably the last 20, I've been on every single strategic planning committee that has been created, I've taken part in all of them and virtually they end up being created and put on a shelf collecting dust. So what my goal is, was to find a way to enlist all stakeholders in this process and really make it a part of the fiber of how we exist day-to-day. So that's me pleading and with a little comedic relief, I hope. So with that process, a rubric was created and rubrics are fascinating in that when students are given rubrics for the expectations of assignments ahead of time, it's a roadmap and it's noted as best practice. So as a teacher, in my heart, that's where I started in this business, I created a roadmap and sent it out to everyone with the elements of the strategic plan connected to that and so everyone can see that. From there, Deb Freitas, oh, and it was reviewed by the leadership team with feedback and then brought back out again. Deb Freitas then created a Google form so that all faculty could weigh in on each, on where they stood with each initiative, whether they were in the planning stage, the building stage, or the transformation stage as a result of where we want to go. And from there, it provided us quantified results and obviously will contribute to a clear direction of where we're heading and allow us to make data-driven decisions as I sent the rubric earlier on in the week. You'll need it to refer to the, as the slides move, we didn't put all of those words on each slide. So if you don't have it, I also have copies, just sort of reach your hand and as we move, I can bring them up to you so that you can refer to it as the schools speak about what they're planning to do and you can see where they're going because it outlines it. But basically, there are three stages that we're looking to address as we're looking at the different skills and strategies. The planning stage is that level of awareness that something needs to change, right? That they, that there's something that could be different or could be better. And from that stage, once it's acknowledged, they'll head to the building stage, which means that actions begin to form or formulate and people start to say, "Oh, we can do this differently or we can look at this differently. We can put these action steps in place in order to get us to the final stage in 2021." So that's the name of the plan, Wareham Public Schools Strategic Plan 2021, to get to the transforming stage. And that basically means that the change has taken place, it's embedded in practice and we're good. We're in good standing and we've done what we were supposed to do. So tonight, we will hear from our schools and I am incredibly proud to work with people with the sole purpose of improving the lives of our students. Scott Palladino, principal of the high school, will present first, followed by Pete Stedman, principal of the middle school, Joan Siemens, and then Bethany Chandler. So first up is Mr. Palladino.
Well, certainly want to thank Dr. Schwam for the work she did behind the scenes putting this together. I know we couldn't have done it without you, so thank you. I also want to thank our school council, our student advisory council, our staff, our parents, and most importantly, our students for their feedback. We've gone through thousands of surveys to look at this data and I'm really happy with the five areas that we're going to use as an initiative for next school year and we really tried to prioritize these as areas that we felt needed remediation. And we also compare them to our data from last year because this is the second year of all this data, specifically looking at the staff data as well and comparing that from one year to the next because we felt that was very reliable data. So as you can see, we're looking at, at a few areas here. We've got five in total. Scholarship learning, connecting to the real world, scholarship teaching, pedagogy and learning, scholarship assessment and accountability, staff knowledge and readiness, leadership and citizenship, which we're looking at distributed leadership, and leadership and citizenships, guides, advocates for the management, manages the cycle of transformation. So those are our five areas that we are looking at. And you've seen the data and you can see we are at, for connecting to the real world. 31.7%, which is a big push for the IB, is making connections with the real world. So I think we'll see that, those numbers increase and we'll start moving more to the transforming stage. So I mentioned the IB and we're hoping to have the NYPD in place very shortly. We have professional development plan for next year in both areas. We are looking, we're spending a lot of time right now, if you drive by the high school in the next few days, you'll see the parking lot is full. We have a lot of work going on, curriculum work being done now and tying in lessons to rubrics and assessments to rubrics. So that's a big push as well. And making sure department heads use this as a lens, excuse me, as they, as they conduct their observations and to work with the teachers during some of the, the team time to make sure that the, the rubrics are being used. We also have a plan for a school-wide implementation, the first week of school, of student readiness, skill-building lessons. And this is exciting because this is the staff's idea and it's driven by department heads to get all the students and staff on the same page. And then our Naviance curriculum, which is a Naviance program, will be in its second year of implementation and we're very excited about the lessons that will be garnered from that, from that web-based program. Moving on to pedagogy, I think that'll be a common theme tonight and that's, that's a big push for us. Obviously, I mentioned the curriculum piece that we're working on, which is huge for our staff. We really, you know, we've had outlines and never really had in-depth unit planning and curriculum planning. So we're very excited about that, that's going on now. And again, it's not going, I don't want you to think it's going to be 100% complete and up to speed with where we need to be. We have a limited number of hours to work, pretty much during the month of June, but that's going to be huge for us moving forward, making sure we're consistent, making sure we're scaffolded, so we're not, you know, re-teaching. We're moving forward and building on this. So we've got that, that curriculum in place and incorporating more critical thinking, problem-solving and, and storing these curriculums so that people have access to them at all times and it's going to be in a shared Google Doc file, which is, which is going to be amazing for us. So moving on to staff knowledge and readiness and in here, we want to improve assessments and we're going to use some early release days to have some of those common assessments completed. We do have some in place right now, but we certainly want to have more benchmark-type assessments. We want to make student learning goals and professional learning goals in the evaluation aligned to our school improvement plan and we think that's important, that we have that total alignment all the way up to the top. Implementation of e-portfolios. Next year, we will have three-quarters of the school will have electronic portfolios. We'll have the seniors will be the last to have the physical portfolios. So that will be exciting as we transition into the e-portfolio system. And we hope to establish an e-portfolio exit interview committee because this is going to be a little bit different. I know some people in this, in this room have been involved in the portfolio exit interview and it's going to be a little bit different when the students do it electronically. So we're looking forward to that. So that's it for staff knowledge and readiness. Moving on, distributed leadership and guides, advocates for, and manages the cycle of transformation. You know, it's always on the surveys that staff wants to find more ways to be involved. And this year, we created quite a few ways for them to be involved. School council handbook committee, interview committee, student advisories, working on those agendas. So there's a lot of opportunities to name but a few, but we're looking to even create some more site-based decision-making that's going to occur and provide more opportunities for teachers to be involved in the leadership. So we're excited about that. And we want to make sure that we have timelines and staff in place for any of these large-scale projects that we need to be managed, whether it be an advisory curriculum, portfolio, handbooks to get folks involved, best practices. We have a great best practice book that we give to all teachers at the beginning of the year. It's electronic, but we share that with everyone and we want to get more and more of the teachers involved in those decisions. So I believe that's it. I do want to end on a, I think, a very high note, discussing some of the accomplishments that we, that we have achieved as a, as a school. And obviously, I think the biggest accomplishment is the International Baccalaureate World School. It took a tremendous amount of work on, on behalf of many of the professionals in the building and we were very excited when we got that phone call. Some people were in tears. They were so excited. So that was very exciting, and that's going to be a huge milestone for us. And I think, and we have 80 students enrolled in that program, so there are 80 students taking classes next year, so that's very exciting. We're hoping to continue on with the NYPD and get that up and running. This year, we went one-on-one with technology, and that was, it was so exciting to see the kids come in in August at night and pick up their computers and just the excitement, and then the excitement the first week. I, I went around the first day of school and walked through 18 classrooms, and 16 of them had computers being utilized by the students. And I believe at least one of the classes was an art classroom. So 16 out of 18 had the computers being used during that period, I thought was outstanding. And I think as the students continue to get used to this format, we'll continue to have those and be ready to use those. Kind of quietly became an F1 school through Homeland Security, which allows us to have foreign exchange students enrolled in Wareham High School for tuition. And that was quite a process, being interrogated by Homeland Security for a few hours and giving them a tour of the school. So I think you'll see that program will start off, and I think in a few years, we'll have, I would, I would anticipate dozens of students from hopefully many different countries attending Wareham High School. I'm proud to say we accepted 44 middle school students in the dual enrollment program. This will be the largest cohort we have had, this is the fourth year of that program. So that's very exciting, and I am very impressed with the seventh and eighth grade students at the middle school. I've met with them multiple, on multiple occasions, and just Dr. Stedman and his staff have done a phenomenal job with those folks. Student advisory committee, you've, you've heard the, the folks present three times, that was pretty exciting. And they also revamped the summer reading program, and that was approved, and that is online. And the students received the information on their last day of classes on that. So the, the summer reading is out there, and they created that. All freshmen and sophomores, as I mentioned, manage and maintain electronic portfolios. So next year, we'll have three classes with those portfolios with the incoming freshmen. And we established the Viking Cafe through our culinary program, where we have a mini-business inside the school, running. Every Thursday, folks can order lunch, and it is created by our students and for a small fee to offset some of the costs, they can have a great lunch. And this was, and I don't think people realize, we brought the co-op school into the high school, and we created a school within a school. And, you know, those kids have some diverse needs, and we were able to do that pretty quietly without a lot of fanfare. And that's a tribute to our deans and our administration, and obviously, the staff that we have in place. So we're excited to have them there for a second year. There won't be the culture shock that they had, you know, coming from a school with maybe 20 kids to a school with over 500. They acclimated quite well, and it was, again, a testament to the staff. So those are some of the highlights from Wareham High School, certainly entertain any questions you may have.
I have a couple of questions. Forgive me, I've not seen this format of a school improvement plan before, so I'm used to the old format, I guess. So my first question is, a lot of the information is based on your survey of staff, is that true? The six-day responses that was staff?
Was faculty, yeah, professional faculty.
Okay, so there's no, there's no reference to parents or students being surveyed and their answers?
I think that will be in the, the form that previously you signed off on. That form is still required and still will be produced.
Okay.
But this is kind of the, the.
So this is just a different presentation of that same improved school improvement plan, is that true?
You'll, you'll still be getting a copy of the, of the large one with a picture of the school on it.
Okay, all right, so students were surveyed and?
Students, parents, staff.
Yep.
Okay.
We have two years of data on that as well.
Okay.
But it's a whole, it's, it's a lot.
Right, right. So I guess I'm used to seeing, you know, goals, this was our goal last year, and this is what we've done to achieve that goal? Did we achieve it, yes or no, part, part of the way? So is that information still available in, in the other, in a different form?
I, I have it, I'd be glad to share it with whoever wants it. I actually ironically turned it in today.
Okay.
So absolutely, the goals are still there, and we still report on the goals, and we still have specific school goals.
Okay, okay. So at the high school level, I mean, one of the issues that we've heard a lot about is students going to other schools. So is that something that you are addressing that is?
Sure, so, you know, a couple of things that we have done throughout the last few years to try and offset that. And I, I think we, the, the number of kids that are going to other schools really hasn't changed much over the last 10, 12 years. The difference is our population of teenage students has declined in this town. So it's not that more students are leaving, it's that the pool of students is less. So the aggregate number enrolled becomes less at the school. But we've, to answer your question, we have done the dual enrollment. You know, traditionally, many of those kids would have looked at upper K, maybe private school. We have a good return rate on those students coming back to the high school, so that, that is one program. The, the other, you know, getting the eighth grade waivers, to get them acclimated, you know, if they, maybe they don't do dual enrollment, now they're involved in athletics, and they get acclimated to the high school that way. We've come over and done some presentations with the, with the students here. And I think, you know, what we're going to see is down the road, having the IB program is going to increase the number of students in our school, because not only will some of these students that may have been on the fence, they'll stay at the high school because of this accelerated program, but I think also you'll start to see some school choice kids coming in. You know, I think every week, we're getting a call asking about the IB program. And I think it's something that, once you have it up and running, I think we'll see, you know, it's like, people want to see it. You know, show me, and then, and then I'll come. So I think once we have it up and running, I think we'll see some more students coming in via, via school, school choice.
Okay. Your culinary program?
And, and Dr. Schwam was mentioning, you know, we do have some vocational-type programs in our school besides DECA. And, you know, certainly the culinary program, and we have a wood shop and CAD, and, you know, we're getting into the engineering and designing, which is a great segue, this year was the first year we really had that, those programs in place. And it was a nice time, because the, we had, you know, the program at the middle school, where the students are involved, coming in. And so that was a nice transition for those students that were in that program.
Okay. Just one more question. The exit interviews, when the seniors are graduating, do you find that you get a lot of useful data and information at that?
Yes, I think, for me personally and professionally, it's, it's a great opportunity to kind of calibrate where we're at and what the students have accomplished and learned over the last four years. And it's a, it's a nice way to be reflective and to look at the way we run the, the school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we're always looking for people to be involved, by the way. I know Dr. Shaver Hood came over this year, and I know Dr. Schwam has been involved as well, but we'd love to have school committee as well.
I'm sorry, clarifying, you'd love to have school committee members involved in the exit interviews?
Correct.
That's interesting.
We're always, we're always looking.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to.
But they're done for this year, I assume?
They're done for this year, but I will make sure that we share the Google Doc.
Thank you. So could you break down that, that 80 number that you talked about with, with respect to IB? Is that 80 incoming juniors and seniors, for example?
So they're all, they're all juniors, because it's a two-year program, okay?
Ah, yes, correct, okay.
So next year, we anticipate doubling. Some of those students, some of those 80 are enrolled in multiple courses. So it's not, the true number isn't 80 students involved in IB, it's, some of those students are counted more than once.
Okay, so of those 80 juniors, okay, it's not 80 juniors, it's 80 classes?
Correct.
So how many total students have, have decided to take an IB course of any type?
I don't have the exact number, but I did look at it, and it's, my estimation would be about high 30s.
So that's 30 out of 110, 20 something?
Correct.
So about 25%?
Correct.
Have chosen, okay?
And don't forget, we still have AP courses that some of them are enrolled in.
You're anticipating my question. Okay, so, so about a quarter have decided to expose themselves to IB. How many have signed up for the IB diploma?
Believe the last count, there were five that are enrolled in the IB diploma.
Five, okay. And what kind of impact has it had on AP enrollment?
So it had an impact. There was one class that we have run the last 20-odd years that we weren't able to run, that would be the, the junior English class, English Language and Comp.
Really?
Yes, and it was down to one section before IB came in. And we, you know, we could have tried to run it, but it was a situation where we needed, we needed to put the section somewhere else, and the numbers were kind of low.
So those students who wanted it either had to take IB, or they had to go to, perhaps, an honors class?
Correct, I believe it was a split. I believe half of them went to the IB and half went to the honors.
And do we have any idea for a first-year school, whether that, that, those numbers are typical?
From Ashley, who has been here for a few presentations, she's the IB coordinator. She has, she spoke with two schools, and they were excited about our numbers and thought they were higher than average, based on their percentage of enrollment that took advantage of the opportunity of their first year. So I, I think, I think we're in a good place. I think we're a little bit higher than I anticipated, especially in the English class, which, but I think that's a good problem to have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good questions, Mr. Swett.
Well, thank you.
Mary?
I don't expect you to have it on the top of your head right now, but maybe you could get it to me later is. So how many of those students are actually special ed students?
Right, I'd have to get that. But there are, I know there are students that have IEPs that are in there, but I'd have to give you an exact number.
I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Another good question.
Judy, ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
The student readiness, skill-building lessons, what, what is that made up of that wasn't being taught before?
Sure, so I would categorize that as kind of creating some ground rules for expectations, study skills, behavioral skills, and just kind of, the way it's going to work is, we have, I believe it's eight units. In each period, the first two days, everyone's going to teach 15, 20-minute unit. And it's going to be across the board, and each, each period has a theme. They're still ironing out the last-minute pieces to it, and we actually have a meeting on Tuesday. But I think it's going to be exciting, and what I'm excited about is everyone's going to be getting the same message, because the lesson is canned, so to speak. And, and I think it's, it's going to, I think it's going to be a nice way to start the year, and all the students are going to be on the, on the same page.
So is it just freshmen or everyone?
All, all high school students.
Okay, good.
It'll, it'll be a short, again, 20-minute period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a question about professional learning goals. Is that, are those learning goals for teachers, their goals, that are part of their evaluation? What's a professional learning?
Yes, yes, thank you. Those, those are, they have the professional learning goal is the second goal, the first goal is the student learning goal. And so those are, those are the ones that they create, and, you know, we try and use the SMART format for those. So it's a, it's a work in progress, but we had some really nice goals this year, and, and they weren't, you know, it wasn't low-lying fruit. They really, a lot of the teachers really worked hard to achieve their goals. And, and basically, what we saw was, we saw an improvement in the instruction through accomplishing those goals.
Yeah, it's a very important part, so I thought that's what it meant. I was glad to see it there. And just Andrea, right at the beginning, you were talking about the whole plan being measurable and data-driven. And there's one more area that I also applaud, and it's very important, that it's research-based to, that the, you know, it's a great plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One second.
Oh. Mr. Swett?
So the, the, to my colleague's comment about the, the format exists with all the data in it, and it's going to be made available to us, but you're not going to be presenting it, is that an accurate statement?
That's accurate. That, that format that you're talking about is required by law to be signed off by the chairman of the school committee, school council, president, and the principal of the school.
Right, but you're not actually going to be coming to a school committee meeting to present it? Is that a correct statement?
At this time, we could come in September to give an overview of the information.
Then if that's going to happen, then I'll hold my questions until then.
Okay, don't forget.
Excuse me? My questions? No, I won't forget my questions. The chair will not forget to schedule it, correct?
Right, I will not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Stedman? She's going to run this?
Right, I'm surprised Tristan hasn't gotten mad at me. He's been looking at me, yeah.
Good evening, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm joined by my assistant principal, Dan LaFavor, and my assistant principal for academics, Ms. Tracy Cote. I want to echo what Mr. Palladino said. Thank you, Dr. Schwam, for all of your efforts to, to build consensus in our admin team, we really appreciate it. As the other schools, we sent out this survey to faculty this spring, and the faculty determined where we were planning, building, and transforming. We targeted those areas where we were planning, and that's what you'll see here. When I am reading from the rubric this evening, I will be reading from the area of building, because that's where we're going. So we targeted, as you see here, those are the higher numbers in planning. So when I target, when I mention the rubric, it's going to be in the building phase, because that's where we're going. The results from this were then analyzed in the faculty leadership council. And again, the faculty leadership council is made up of department chairs, administration, counselors, social workers, school psychologists, sort of having a bird's-eye view of this, of this data. And then based on the data, we saw areas of faculty had designated as areas for growth, and therefore, we built our priorities from there. And we shared our priorities with our school council and received feedback from them, as well as our student council. And again, as Doc, as Mr. Palladino said, thank you to all those members who were involved in that, the faculty, the student council, the school council, all the members who gave their valuable, valuable feedback. One overarching theme that you will hear this evening from the middle school is that our work next year is really going to be determined by the fact that we are an international baccalaureate candidate school, and we are also implementing the Positive Behavioral Support System, or PBIS. So the first slide here is then, we've identified that connected to the real world and anywhere, anytime is an area for growth. Again, I'm reading from building, so where we want to be in terms of real world, we want many of our students' learning experiences to be relevant and connected to, at a minimum, the local community. Our goal in the middle school is to build authentic learning experiences for our kids, period. To that end, we believe that by exploring the International Baccalaureate Program over the next few years, hopefully moving that program along, moving from candidate status to eventually being hopefully an NYPD school, we can build upon the current relevant learning experiences of our students. Professional development has already started in the NYPD, and we have sent some department chairs recently down to, to receive NYPD training. The unit planners, as Mr. Palladino has discussed, have already been starting to be worked on by our department chairs and many, many of our faculty members. Those IB, those unit planners are a framework for curriculum planning, they are tied to the mass frameworks, but they're also a framework that's very deeply aligned with the International Baccalaureate. In order to present, connect to the real world, we are also going to have learning experiences targeted per grade level. For grade five, we are going to really focus on building community with those students entering the middle school. Grade six is going to focus on college, college is where we're going. So each grade, each classroom within the grade six will have a college that they will embrace throughout the year. So along the hallway, we'll have University of North Carolina, Michigan, Notre Dame, Assumption College. They'll learn the fight song, they'll wear the colors, but also, but they'll also explore what is offered at those colleges and universities to give those sixth graders an idea that coming up, hey, you know what? If I'm an artist, I may want to go to the Savannah College of Art and Design. So starting to build that into grade six. Of course, the academies, now I'm really pleased to announce that our academies are solidified. We've got a strong seventh grade humanities academy and a strong STEAM academy as well in seventh grade. And then eighth grade is going to be focused on the community project, which is required by the IB, but it aligns so well to DECA as well. So we hope to build some partnerships, again, with the DECA program in the high school. Anywhere, anytime, it may be a little unfamiliar language to you, again, building, we want many learning opportunities available to students at varied times. The key here is that we do not want students to see that learning takes place from eight to two. We want students to have this mindset that learning can happen anywhere, anytime. And of course, we have. And of course, we have a number of amazing initiatives that have occurred this year from the outdoor classroom, the amazing Cranberry Bog that we brought grade two students to this week, incredible field trips to Boston. We mentioned athletic participation in the high school, the play. We're looking to expand that. We're looking to even develop that even more to encourage learning that doesn't end. The next stage of scholarship is pedagogy and learning. And the key to the curriculum planners are really focusing on incorporating what are known as approaches to learning, or ATLs, and that is a framework of the IB. As Scott Palladino will say, with the IB in the high school, it's like joining the military. There are a lot of different acronyms. ATL is one you'll hear a great deal. And these are specific skills, approaches to learning, that can be taught, improved upon by practice, and then developed incrementally over time. So those approaches to learning are going to be both academic and social. We will also focus on the curriculum planners and building summative assessments because if we know that our students are expected to not only succeed in MCAS, but we also want them to be thoughtful, life-changing, world-changing citizens, we need to plan backwards from where we know, where we know we need to go. And so we need to teach those explicit, expected behaviors, both in the classroom and outside the classroom. And that's going to happen both with IB and also PBIS. Learning walks are an integral part of our school. We're hoping to expand those as well. This is really created by Tracy Cote a few years ago and we're hoping to expand those with a focus on student feedback, teacher-student feedback, but also looking at student voice in the classroom and engagement. This plan, the next stage is planning and implementation. This plan, as I said, the identification of where we are going was really identified by the Faculty Leadership Council. The FLC should have built this plan and they will monitor and adapt as needed. But this, the FLC doesn't exist in isolation, right? Because on the FLC, there are members of department chairs or administration, there's school psychologists that, there are members of grade level teams, there's members of different departments. So we know that they're going to be constantly working together, reflecting upon this plan, reflecting upon our goals, and seeing if we need to adapt as needed. The real focus for us this year is summative assessments, as I mentioned. Professional development will be designed for the unit planners to build those and of course to, with assessment to focus on how, when, and why we assess our students to promote student achievement. Finally, in some ways, this should have been the first slide because the idea is that we are, it is essential that we build a collective vision. Faculty and members of, of the community identified this as an area of growth. Again, reading from building, as the process for developing the collective vision continues, adoption grows as parents, community, and educational leaders incorporate it into their language. It's essential that we build a common language in the middle school around the IB, but also expected behaviors. We are developing common language, but also a pathway. Faculty and students and families will gain familiarity with the IB philosophy, teaching practices, and also PBIS. The key is that we will develop a thorough behavior plan using PBIS, where we will establish clear expectations for student behavior reinforced by positivity. But of course, what we talked about with the handbook being accepted here last few weeks ago, that we will have a, we will follow the discipline codes to address those students who disrupt the learning environment. And of course, that discipline code also ties really nicely, dovetails with the IB learner profile. With, with the engaged supportive community, we've touched on this about creating those, that global view. It's going to be really important for us to continue those relationships that we've started with the Wareham community, that we will look for opportunities to grow as building relationships with the participants in Wareham. And again, it was an amazing year, a number of accomplishments. The second one, I think it's important because Tracy's behind me. I mean, it's, it's amazing to consider that we also, as Scott Palladino mentioned, that we rolled out the Chromebooks for every single student, grade five through eight. But having all of those students, all of those students take their MCAS exams on their Chromebooks was an enormous accomplishment. Unbelievable what Tracy Cote, working in collaboration with her department chairs, was able to do. It's remarkable. We launched the Humanities Academy this year and now it's part of who we are. And we had signups just a few weeks ago. We're really excited to broaden that program. As I mentioned, the Cranberry Bog Outdoor Classroom was a huge success. The Nature's Classroom was also a wonderful achievement for our school this year. Clubs and activities, if you had the opportunity to see Peter Pan, the art show, our Spirit Week was awesome. So we were really excited by the number of different activities that occurred this year. And also, it's not on there, but it should be. We had a great science fair.
Yeah, you did.
We had a great science fair, thanks to Ms. Scott and Mrs. Scott. And as I said, I've mentioned a lot tonight, we're excited to start exploring the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program and how that is going to impact teaching, learning, and Wareham Middle School. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm not sure where to begin. Let's start with the fact that I've been hearing about PBIS for years. And not you, but some people have suggested that it, it was not working all that well. Are you committed to PBIS? Is PBIS, PBIS something that really worked last year? Tell me about your experience with PBIS.
Yeah, so this year was an exploratory year of PBS. We sent a number of faculty members to training. We have coaches. Jeff Gately and Kim Bergmini are our main coaches. Yes, I'm excited for PBIS because I think it's going to give us some common language to talk about targeted behaviors. I'm excited in learning about how students are some of the key members in producing videos about the behavior. So it's not necessarily top-down, it's, it's community building. So in many ways, I'm very excited for it.
Okay, because it's more than a two years old. I mean, it's been around for a while now.
Correct, but this is my first year in the building, so I'm just...
I understand completely. So, good luck, okay?
Just for the purpose of clarity, we were invited through the Department of Education to participate in a Focus Academy. So the schools were given an opportunity to join this Focus Academy, which was out of the University of Connecticut that is, that has developed a procedure using the PBIS method to then participate as a, as a school, or the schools that chose to participate in this academy, this three-year commitment. So this is our first year and three schools signed up to participate in the academy, which then rolls out, there's training and there are coaches, there's a whole system that's put in place that's very specific to the University of Connecticut's work that they've done in this. So it's, I understand your point and yes, it has been around for a long time, but this approach to it has not.
Fair enough. I appreciate the distinction. What makes this approach more likely to be successful?
Because it's, well, first, we have three schools involved, which is very exciting. Secondly, it's research-based, it's been vetted. And they have examples of how it has to be brought to the attention of the school itself in order for it to be successful. And it's procedures and processes that make that work. And those are the, that's what's so important to whether or not it's going to stick or not. And so I think just the way they've gone about it, with research being key to that and the methods by which they've chosen to roll it out, it'll make a big difference than just calling it PBIS all by itself.
Okay. Secondly, NYPD. I distinctly remember, this goes way back, but there's somebody in this room who will remember exactly what I'm talking about. We tried a new approach with teaching in the middle school and it was so successful that the teacher brought students and parents in front of the school committee and everybody was thrilled with this approach to teaching. I'm not even going to say what the approach was. It's not important. And it was a great presentation and everybody was thrilled, et cetera, et cetera. And then a year later, less than that, six months later, this teacher went from being a hero to a goat. And that's because the students rebelled at this new approach to teaching and she was told she was the worst teacher in the world. And it was a wonderful experience, as you can imagine, for that teacher. So to what extent is NYPD, especially with these middle school students who are really strong-minded and yet immature at the same time, to what extent is NYPD something that we can expect students to gravitate to, fall in love with, or perhaps even reject? Because I can tell you from conversations with students at the high school, who are far more mature, they look at it and they say, one, one student will tell me, it's great, and another one says, no, I actually like the sage on the stage. You know, I don't want it to be student-centered, okay? So how confident are you that, that the middle school student will love NYPD?
Well, I, I think with anything, it's going to take time. I just, I feel confident that this is where we're going, simply based on a conversation that I observed with Jeff Egger. I haven't asked him to use his name, but I, I think he'll let me. So Jeff Egger and I and a few other teachers, when we were exploring the NYPD, we visited Provincetown and Provincetown has the NYPD. And in our discussions in that building, Jeff would say, oh, well, we're doing that with STEAM. We're doing that with humanities. I don't believe NYPD is, you don't, it's not, it doesn't come in a box that it's Tuesday, so therefore we're on lesson seventeen. It's very much a way of thinking and my belief is that the kind of interdisciplinary work, the kind of student-centered work that's being done right now, it's simply going to build upon what we already do. And I, I see our school being a model in many ways for the kind of foundation that's already there. But like any type of program, the IB is going to, it's part of the reason we have a candidacy status and then they give us a few years to fully implement it. It's going to take time. And I'm sure, like with anything, there might be some students who love the approach. There might be some students who have some skepticism, but critical thinking is okay.
So are these also two-year courses like the high school?
So they're not. So we would start in grade six with, starting the NYPD and then we'd go six, seven, eight, and then it would continue in grades nine and ten in the high school. So although we're in two different buildings, it's seen as one middle years program.
And what percentage of the students would you consider to be a successive if they enrolled in NYPD?
Well, it's, it's not enroll, so it's all or nothing. Everyone's going to be doing NYPD.
Ah, so unlike the junior and senior year of a high school, you get, you're in NYPD, period. If you're, if you're at Wareham Middle School and grade nine and ten, you're in NYPD.
IB for all, yeah.
Thank you. Don't misconstrue my, my, I'm excited about it.
No.
I won't tell you about a conversation with a Shaw's cashier recently. That's another issue.
Mary?
So just going back to the PBIS, I was here in the district when we were implementing PBIS and I can honestly say it was never fully implemented. So that is my own opinion that it, that's why it wasn't successful. And then the second thing was, boy, just went right out of my head. It was about, it was about IB. Oh, yes, came right back. Training, what's the plan for training of staff?
Right, so we're starting with department chairs. Tracy Cote has gone to training, a number of department chairs have gone to training. And then we're going to slowly roll that out to faculty as well as needed. And that's why they also give us time. But the expectation, if we're going to move from candidacy to authorization status, is that we have to train our faculty. We're also having the IB come in 2018 to do a large-scale faculty launch training as well, which is much more cost-effective.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, what do you think the average cost is for the training? For going, like where Tracy's going?
It's about, for the courses and such, it's about $900.
So does it take place in-state?
It depends. We do as much as we can in-state. So they'll come into Boston, we'll send to Boston. We look to the closest that we can, as much as possible. It's not always easy, particularly as they're subject-specific because there aren't a lot of people, right, available for their specific subject. But we formed great relationships with Sturges Charter School and they've been very, very open and willing to help us out. And we're beginning to, now that we have actual, we're an IB world school at the high school, we're able to tap on that a little bit more and start to generate training that's more available to the region. So they're excited that we are part of it and we're excited that they're part of it because then we can help each other.
And we would do the same thing with Provincetown as well, for the NYPD.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me here? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. So we are here to present the Minute Forest Plan. I'd like to thank the school council members who are here this evening, who came to support. Thanks to Mrs. Murphy for being here as well. So when we're looking at the areas that we wanted to focus on for Minute Forest, we looked at student voice. We were in the planning stage with that last year and now we're moving more towards the building stage. We looked at pedagogy and learning and you'll find that as we get through all these presentations, a lot of the schools are picking the same type of skills and strategies, which is amazing. So we looked at that. We were in the buildings, the early building stage last year and we've moved higher into the building stage. We wanted to continue that. For scholarship assessment accountability, we looked at staff knowledge and readiness. And for the leadership and culture, we looked at distributed leadership. So those are the areas that we chose to focus on. So when you look at student voice, I found that when you look through the rubrics, student voice comes in many of the categories. But we're looking at student-centered learning, which goes along with our goal of having more personalized learning. We want to have more opportunities for students to produce work. Example, the research projects that they do, in third grade, they do the Mass Famous Person Project. Some of that is the bottle projects that the students make. They research a person and they present that as well. I know the fourth graders just had their Washington monuments and things that they've presented. We want to have more choices made by students, taking ownership in their learning. We're developing morning meeting, which is part of the responsive classroom. And that morning meeting has an active voice for students. And we're looking at center activities in preschool using the OWLS curriculum. So we want to make sure we're incorporating our preschool staff there as well. The next one that we looked at is the pedagogy and learning. So teaching and learning would take place with two teacher teams in grades three and four. This year, we took a risk and we tried trios. And although it worked, we found it'll be better on a two-person team. The students were moving amongst the three teachers. It was a little bit harder to build those relationships with students. Not that they didn't happen, but it'll be more intimate with the two teacher teams and we know that teachers will be able to focus more on the students. They'll share students while they teach in the content. Teachers will provide interventions and modifications to meet those needs of the students. So again, they're using the data, they're providing that. Instruction will be delivered in multimodal ways. The morning meeting will be part of this as well. And we are looking at reading and implementing the first six weeks of school. So all staff were given this book to read over the summer as a book club. And this is something that we're really going to be focusing on when we come back to school. We're looking at push-in models to incorporate that. So Title I, our ELL teacher, we want to have more push-in services rather than pull-out. And for special ed, we're trying to look at more fully inclusive for math. For assessment, under staff knowledge and readiness, we'll be continuing with our data meetings to help understand and interpret the data. Mrs. Murphy does a great job looking at the fast data. We've developed a template that we can send home to families so they understand it. It's easy to read instead of the four pages that we normally get. So she does a great job meeting with the staff and going over that data, planning their groups for reading and such. We'll be progress monitoring to... We'll be progress monitoring to check on student progress. It's right in the FAST program, so we want to utilize that more next year. Students will take their assessments throughout the year on the Chromebook. They can take their math assessments that way now, as they did for their MCAS. And again, I know it was reiterated earlier, the third graders this year never had Chromebooks, so it was the first year they had one-to-one Chromebooks, and it's the first year they took MCAS online. So it was a tremendous amount of work. Love the technology department that was there to help us. And since middle school went first, Mrs. Cote was able to help us when it came time for all the registering we had to do and the accommodations. And then literacy training for pre-K three and four, we're very excited with that, and professional development that will be taking place before the school year begins. Distributed leadership, we're working really hard to be collaborative with our staff members. So the assignment of two teacher teams will be by the teacher preference. So teachers have selected who they want to work with, and that really worked out easy. And then they're selecting if they want to teach the ELA, if they are teaching math, science, and social studies. The leadership team will share responsibility with staff for planning and the placement of students. So we worked with various committees, inclusion committees, scheduling committees. We've had teachers and our special ed staff looking at placing students for next year. The committees with the leadership team and staff will work together on scheduling, as I just mentioned. Again, the book club will be established to read and implement those first six weeks of school, because we really want to nail down those routines, those structures, create that classroom environment within those first couple of weeks of school. And the preschool staff also will be working with the literacy consultants. So as we look at, you know, what have we accomplished this year? Here we go, Mr. Swet, PBIS. We attended the academy sessions. And part of that work, and it wasn't just one coach that we've had in the past that went to training, came back and tried to teach everybody, we had about six or seven members of our school team that would go from each of the schools. And we're developing lesson plans, and we've developed videos. So with the help of Christian Fernandez, we now have videos to go with all the lesson plans that the teachers are implementing. So they're quite comical to watch. Very proud of preschool, that they received the NAIC accreditation this year, it was a renewal process, so it's good for five years. This was the first year that preschool has a structured curriculum using the OWLS program. It's also the first year that we have full-day programming for our peer models in preschool. So for a couple of our classes, peer models can go for the full day. So that's been exciting. It's a, we have a lot of families that sign up for that. Teacher trios were implemented, but again, we felt that the dual will be better next year. Completed the MCAS online, we have a full-time social worker this year, who is amazing, working with students. She counsels students who have IEP goals, she works with the outside agencies, she's talking to kids, she's talking to families, she does check-in, checkout, which is part of PBIS. She just does so much work, and really helping our students, in our staff. The MSBA feasibility study, this is just so exciting. Right now, where we are is we've interviewed to hire the project manager. So, we recommended to MSBA, we're waiting to negotiate the fee with them, and then to move forward in that process. So, another hurdle we have overcome with that. PLC time, so professional learning communities. We established that during common planning time this year, so we had time during the day in the schedule where teachers could meet with their content area, with their grade level, and they could plan lessons. So they really appreciated that. And then we hosted student visitors from China, we developed that partnership and that memorandum agreement with Chinese officials. So we're proud of that. Any questions?
I have a question about the PLC time. I know, beginning of the year, you said you developed a new master schedule which would let people meet, common planning time. Did you have PLC time for all the disciplines? How many?
Yeah, so we had time during the day, so the math teachers could meet, the ELA teachers could meet, but then the whole grade level could meet. But we also used some of our Tuesday times for PLC as well. So, we developed a schedule for the entire year. So we had a staff meeting one Tuesday, PLC for the various content areas, time for teachers to meet for grade level as well, and then data meetings typically fell on those Tuesdays.
Did you have PLC leaders leading the meeting, or did they come together to lead a session?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Did you have a leader for the professional, each professional learning community?
It varied on the topic. A lot of times, Mrs. Murphy led them, or we did have teacher leading the meetings. Yes.
So I just want to commend you on that you specifically addressed special ed in your plan, about different modules of instruction, personalized learning. They are our most at-risk students, and it needs to be, I believe, part of the plan. And then also, I was going to ask about, what exactly is the professional development for the literacy? What are they going to be focusing on?
That's the next presentation.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
All right. All right, and then I might-
Stay tuned.
I might have missed it, but what did you say the name of the book was that staff-
The first six weeks of school.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you opened up your presentation talking about the fact that your teaching has become more student-centered, which is music to IB people's ears, of course. How much of a transition, at the elementary school level, is this for a member of the faculty, to go from less student-centered to more student-centered? I'm not sure what the opposite of student-centered is at high school. I guess they talk about the sage on the stage. I'm not sure what it is at elementary school. But has it been a challenge for the faculty to become more student-centered?
I think it's easier for elementary staff, because we're so used to centers and rotating students through centers.
Meaning groups?
Yes, various groups, and focusing on various curriculum areas. So it is easier for them. The teachers will teach a whole group lesson, and then they're breaking up those students into groups based on the skills and abilities and needs and so forth.
What percentage of your students are participating in team-teaching situations?
Well, they all participated, because last year, we had the trios, so the students moved in and out of the three teacher classrooms. And next year, it'll just be focused on the two teachers.
So everybody?
Everybody.
Every member of the faculty is part-
In third and fourth.
Is part of a team?
Yes, fourth grade-
Not preschool, but yes.
Fourth grade, we've done that traditionally for the past couple of years. This was new for third grade. We wanted to try something new, and we did that, so.
And it's, and it's teams of three, not two?
This year, we did teams of three, next year, we're focusing on teams of two.
Okay. And are you comfortable that it's been a success?
Yes. I know it'll be more of a success with teams of two, because they can really concentrate more on those students.
Okay.
And this came from the staff. We surveyed the staff during the year about what went well, what would you like to see changed for next year? So the feedback we got from the staff is what drove this decision.
From three to two?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, okay. The Chromebooks. Do you think, when you go from manual to Chromebooks for MCAS assessments, what, what's the expectation with respect to the impact on the results? Does the state care, for example, that you've gone from manual to Chromebooks?
Well, it's funny that you ask that, because I asked that at one of our webinars, about the accountability. Are we going to be held accountable for our results when we have students that never had a Chromebook, that are taking it for the first time? And they said, "We haven't determined that." So I voiced my opinion and said, "Well, I don't think you should for the first year."
They're not.
So, yeah, that was way back in the early stages of planning.
So they acknowledge that it has some impact, they just haven't figured out how to put it into an algorithm or something.
Right.
Well, we can just hold our breath and, yes, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Joan, the video that you talked about, the PBIS videos, if you could plug Mrs. Ottavio's, is it, Lisa Ottavio?
Ottaviano, yes.
Her video, you can vote for. Our kids made a video, it's now on Garden-
It's the Garden Tower Project.
And so if you can go on and vote, do you have the website, or we can shoot it out to people, because we would like our students to win?
Yes, I think it's WishPond, but I'll, I'll look it up while the meeting goes on.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, just one quick thing. I would still love to see that wonderful report you did comparing kids who went through our preschool program and third-grade MCAS results versus kids that didn't. The first set of results were off-the-chart, extraordinary, and I'd love to see if it could be repeated again, if it was repeated again.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Schwam, you know what I'm talking about, yes?
I certainly do.
Dr. Shaver-Hood, Dr. Schwam, audience. We are excited here at DeCA School to present our school improvement plan for 2017, 2018. So thank you for inviting us here tonight. I also want to say thank you to the school council, representing here. Ms. Bazanet is here, Ms. Tricker's part of that school council. We took our information from school council, from the teacher survey, the professional teacher survey, to come up with our skills, our skills and strategies for 2017, 2018. I'd like to introduce you tonight to the DeCA's team who will be presenting this with me. First, I'd like to introduce you to Sarah Russo, who's sitting to the right of me, Assistant Principal. Joanne Gibbs, Assistant Principal to the left. I have Michelle Skolnick here, Special Education. Jackie Tricker, Special Education. Deanna Semple, Physical Education. Melissa Dion, STEAM teacher. And Lindsay Wolf, Regular Grade One. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's a tremendous honor to be here with all of you. They're my support. So I'm going to begin with our areas of focus with Ms. Russo, who will present scholarship and learning.
Good evening. Scholarship with learning. We'd like to have a connection to the real world. We're going to move from 55% from building to the transforming stage, through having our young learners understand the world around us by planning meaningful experiences for them. Our second item is anywhere, anytime. We'd like to move forward from 44% planning to the building stage, through the use of technology, utilization of learning space, and maximizing learning time, capturing every moment. Student voice, to move from 72% building to the transforming stage, through center-based facilitation of engaging lessons that allow students to share their knowledge and ideas.
Thank you. Next, we're looking at scholarship of teaching. We also chose pedagogy and learning. In the early grades, it's such a focus for us to look at how we teach our young learners, because we are the foundation. So here, we're going to move from 53% building to transforming through the use of team planning time, peer observations, and professional development. And now, Ms. Gibbs?
For the next area, we chose scholarship with assessment and accountability. At an elementary level, where we are catered to, it's very important that we use data, and we have accurate data, in order to inform our instructions and help us with early intervention. We chose purpose and beliefs to move from 51% planning to the building stage, by developing an assessment team that'll share the purpose of assessments with our school community, as well as shared data collected from the assessments to make informed decisions about instruction. With planning and implementation, we hope to move from 45% planning to the building stage, through scheduling ahead of time, making sure that our staff knows about the testing, what the testing's going to entail. We're looking at developing specific procedures and protocols, so that our data is valid and accurate across all classrooms. And we're also looking at developing ways to share this data faster and in a more friendly way through a one-page sheet, similar to what Minut is using.
And finally, leadership and citizenship, we have two areas. Building a collective vision. So, as the building leader, looking at all of our ideas and putting them together in an idea that is collective, so we all understand what our mission is. And we're going to move from 51% planning to the building stage. And finally, creating policies and practicing structure, to move from 66% building to the transformation stage by reviewing, writing, and implementing practices that will ensure a safe and productive school environment. And these are the areas that we just talked about, and how we're going to move to the right in those three areas in red. And to present scholarship and learning, I have Ms. Russo and Ms. Lindsay Wolf. Lindsay?
The first skill that we're going to focus on is connection to the real world. It's very important to us that we support our young learners to recognize connections to the real world, and we develop our lessons to support them, to facilitate them, to bridge the knowledge that they've gained from learning in class to connections in the real world.
We'd also like to focus on the concept of anywhere, anytime, in order to teach our students that they are lifelong learners. We'll expand communication and engagement with students through technology by utilizing programming that allows our students to connect to their learning before school and after school.
The third skill that we're going to focus on is student voice. Our students will experience open-ended and self-directed inquiry-based lessons that will provide them to lead in their own instruction, deepen their knowledge, and grow as learners as measured through open-ended assessments and observation.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Sarah. Now to present scholarship of teaching, I invite Melissa Dion and Michelle Skolnick to join me.
In pedagogy and learning, we want to utilize our team planning time for teachers to develop and choose lessons that will align to the standards, to infuse best practice, open-ended questions, and rigor in each of the lessons they use.
Teachers will continue their growth of programming by attending professional development, and have opportunities for peer observation and learning walks will take place on a monthly basis.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, now I've got Ms. Gibbs back to the stage with Ms. Tricker for assessment.
In addressing assessment, our first skill and strategy focuses on our purpose and belief, to build an assessment team that provides information to staff, parents, and the community on the purpose of the assessments at DeCA School, why the tests are important, and how we will use the data to make informed decisions. This leads to our additional action step, to use the data to help us to make informed decisions, to shape instruction, and to meet the diverse needs of our students.
With planning and implementation, one of the challenges we've faced at DeCA is the time it takes. We do have to test each student individually, one-on-one. So we have been working to find ways to streamline our testing by pulling in staff even from other buildings. So we're creating a testing team that will come in, and our plan is to have our testing done in a much shorter window. And then again, taking that information, placing it into a one-page document that's more friendly, not only for our staff to be able to look at quickly and be able to see what it is that their students are doing, and the progress they're making, or the areas that they need assistance in, but also for our families, so that we can provide them with quicker information about their child and their child's progress.
but also for our families so that we can provide them with quicker information about their child and their child's progress.
Thank you. For our next slide for Leadership and Citizenship, I invite Ms. Semple to join me. Ms. Semple?
On our skills and strategies, building a collective vision, which is why we're all here tonight as a group. We're representing Deacon School as the staff, and we work together to present this, and so that's going to, the whole school's going to be working together so that the Deacon's community will have a voice in the needs of our students.
Thank you. And our final action step is creating policies and practicing structure. We have policies and procedures already in place, but we would like a more cohesive manual that teachers, it's very teacher-friendly, that we practice on a continuous basis. That's a real great reference for a quick thumb-through, look at. So it says, "The Deacon's community will have a cohesive set of procedures within the institution to refer to at any time in order for our learning environment to thrive." And when a problem occurs, a course of action will be instituted to rectify, order to secure our learning environment. Often when we have problems, it's important that we write down these policies and procedures so we know not to have that problem again. So we are creating a system, the Assistant Principals and I, this summer, to have this manual. Okay. And those are our action steps as we see it for 2017, 2018. I'd like to invite the teachers now to celebrate our accomplishments of 2016 and 2017. So teachers, I will step back, but I will answer any questions and I'll be right back to it.
So I'll start off with PBIS. We've begun our rollout and we've begun our training. PBIS is a school-wide framework of behavior positive inter, behave, sorry, Positive Behavior Intervention System, which focuses on positive reinforcement of our targets, which are respect, responsibility, and safety. We've developed several procedures to recognize positive behaviors.
I'm sorry, that's okay.
Several procedures to recognize the positive behaviors throughout our school. Those include the Golden Ticket Awards, a Golden Carpet Award for students who have met some targets that we set out, as well as reinforcing expectations with school-wide lessons, common language, and visual supports. We also have Focus K2, which is a curricular program in full implementation at the kindergarten level. This program utilizes project-based learning through cross-curricular activities to advance learning and engage students in order to give them a voice.
And this year, we implemented team teaching throughout all three grade levels. There were some trios, but mostly duos, just based on numbers and odds and evens. We found there were many benefits to team teaching, both for teachers and for students. It allows the students to connect with multiple personalities and teaching styles as well as having numerous opportunities for small-group learning. And two teachers have the ability to collaborate in order to deliver the strongest, most creative lessons. We also had one-to-one technology in Grade Two. They did not have to take MCAS, but they were able to access their Envision's Math curriculum on a daily basis, as well as be involved in many writing lessons throughout the year.
Successful family events at Deacon are many. I'm going to just briefly try to go down the list here. Being a lower elementary school, we have a lot of family involvement. Some of the highlights were, in addition to Open House and Parent-Teacher Night, were the Red Ribbon Awareness Night, which showcases healthy alternatives and activities available to families in our community, part of our Safe and Drug-Free Schools Initiative. Team Building Day, where students learned about community and worked together in different activities. November Food Drive, where students bring a non-perishable food item and they get to wear a hat for a day. The Holiday Fair, which we host with the PTA with games, gifts, and raffles, and so much more. Jump Broke Heart, which raises funds for the American Heart Association. Learning Expeditions, where students showcase their work and talents to community members, such as yourselves. Hundredth Day Activities, including tuna fish can collection, which raised over 100 cans for the food pantry. Field Days, where families are invited to cheer on students in track events and relay races. Ice Cream Social to welcome incoming kindergarteners. And these are in addition to the numerous events the PTA runs, such as Boost-a-Thon Fun Run, which is an enormous, enormously profitable fundraiser for our schools, all of our schools, elementary schools, and promotes character building and healthy habits. Also, the Book Fair, movie nights, and other stuff the PTA does.
And a couple other really awesome nights. We have a STEAM night, which brings families in to work together with their, their children on different design challenges. It also involves the community. We bring in scientists from Smithers Lab and members of the Wareham Land Trust to work with students and show them how different careers work. We have the Art Show, which has put together really well with Mrs. Osborne the last few years. She does a tremendous job getting all the kids' art together, making sure they all have pieces in it so they can be proud and show off what they've done. This year, we had a Literacy Night. We had a local author illustrator named Jordan Cardinal come in and tell the kids about illustrating and the importance of using pictures in their work and telling stories. And we had a lot of storytelling activities.
And I guess if you have any questions, we can take them down.
Oh, the telephone?
Oh, okay. I was ready to go home. I'm going to tell you about our telephone communication system that we have now. Every staff member in our school has their own voicemail, their own extension, which obviously saves a lot of time through our office staff because we can be reached directly or a message can be left. It saves time, too, in us responding because we don't have to wait to hear about a message or see it in our mailbox. We know the line is blinking, so we know that we have a message waiting. All staff have the ability to call within rooms and to make announcements over the loudspeaker through their phones. And so learning is not disrupted by announcements coming over the loudspeaker for dismissals, et cetera. And so students' privacy is secured.
So let me tell you the story of Corridor E. When I moved in, it was the place to be. Big sunny windows and a shiny floor, bustling classrooms behind each and every door. When the storm clouds rolled in and the rain began to fall, should it be inside? Should it be raining in the hall? Buckets and barrels strategically placed as we packed up our classrooms to move to dry space. The roof walkers came, they were ready to go. The date-moving farther away with the cold and the snow. The boiler was working as hard as it could. Frankie kept it going as long as it would. Three long months to get our new roof. Come visit our classrooms to see the proof. No more barrels or puddles, the floors are all dry. No longer we keep our eye to the sky. The new boilers are humming and keeping us warm. There is no fear of the next rainstorm. All back in our classrooms, we took it all in stride. We worked as a team, always with Deacon's pride. If you have any questions, Mrs. Chandler will field those.
Thank you, staff.
School Committee, I invite for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Swett?
Be easy on me, it's one of my first times up here, you know?
So there's three terms that the School Committee has been asked to think in, at a, at 50,000 feet. Basically, it's planning, building, and transforming?
Correct.
So, most people can plan.
Correct.
Some people can build. Very few can transform. So, it's an extraordinary goal to transform. What do you think are the biggest impediments? And I could have asked this of any of the principals, so sorry to choose you.
Oh, that's quite all right.
So what do you think the biggest impediments are to that final stage of development?
I would highly agree with you that planning, we can all come up with a lot of ideas. And then building, we can come up with action steps for those ideas. But it's the implementation of the act, the action steps with consistency over time.
And have those steps actually work.
Right, that creates transformation. Because when you, it's just happening fluidly, you know you're in the transformation stage. So I would say consistency is key. And if we see a fumble, you've got to back up.
So leadership consistency?
Correct.
Do you think you have the, and as, once again, I could have asked all four presentations this. I love the fact that the faculty took the time to be here. Thank you very much. I'm going to take that as you've got buy-in on this, yes?
Yes. I think, that was wonderful. I'm so proud to be a part of the staff. They did a tremendous job.
And that would be obviously a major obstacle, but with, with buy-in and consistent leadership, it should work, yes?
Yeah, through facilitation.
Good luck. I'll be excited to watch the progress.
Thank you, Mr. Swett.
Anyone else?
Thank you again, School Committee. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Deacon's staff. We look forward to 2017, 2018 school year.
So this is a quick summary of some of the accomplishments that have happened this year. We have binders for all of you with these slides made up. They're right up here. So you can take that. If you have any questions in the future, or you have questions now that you'd like to ask, I'm certainly happy to answer those questions. Oh, and we just got very fortunate with the Envision Math Program, that the MCAS looks exactly like the Envision program online. So they were very familiar with the platform, the students. So that was just, I would like to say I could take credit for it, but it was just very lucky that it happened that way. So it wasn't as unfamiliar as we might have thought it would have been for them.
While you're, while you're thinking of questions, if I could ask Joan to come up and just read the website for everyone?
I have it.
Oh, you do? Okay, great.
It's also on the MineIt Forest Facebook for voting for this, for the video, but it's http: colon, double slash, wshe.es/5, B as in boy. Is that a Q? Is that a Q? Oh, nine. Capital B, sorry. So five. Capital B, nine. H or N? H, capital Y, lowercase d, two lowercase i's. Sounds easier to go to the Facebook page.
Yeah, was the beginning all lowercase?
So I do have a question.
Go right ahead.
The middle-years program, comparing it to the high school IB program, which is more of a choice that a student makes. So the middle-year program really isn't a choice. Is that true?
It's true. The IB doesn't allow a school to exclude anyone when you inquire. So it's an all-or-nothing proposition with the middle-years program.
So have you had any feedback from students or families about that? Questioning that?
There hasn't been a lot of feedback, but we've had a lot of presentations over a long period of time now. I think we started three years ago, and we've had presentations every year since then about it. And it's really a way of pedagogy, right? It's re-looking at how we teach and re-examining the elements of our practices and trying to open up the doors to help kids think more critically about where they want to go, what they want to do, what they'd like to find out, and encourage them to participate actively in their learning. So, it's, it's complex in that way, and it's also very interdisciplinary. So it encourages all of the ideas that you've heard about tonight. And this, this is from other research. So it's, this is, although partly, I assume, it's not from IB. This presentation is a result of a strategic planning committee and all of those elements. But all of those elements are permeating through, or the ideas are all permeating through all of the schools. And it seems to be the research and everything else is leading to the idea that we really need to help our kids become thoughtful learners and be prepared to learn and take learning seriously as a, as a way for them to then have all the opportunities possible as they grow. And hopefully be happy most of the time.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe I will share the conversation I had with this show's cashier. She was unhappy at Upper Cape. And of course, I took the opportunity to make everybody in line and behind me a little upset because I started advocating for Wareham Public Schools and specifically for the IB program. And after she listened to my short speech, she said, "Oh, I don't want to work that hard." That was a showstopper for me. My question is, is it, is it literally a function of expecting students to work harder in an IB program? Or is it just working smarter and differently?
It's, it's different, and I would say that it's harder because it's not passive. Sitting in a chair, listening to someone talk at you, and taking a test from that information. Right? It's not hard to sit and listen to somebody, right? You sit, and you can choose to listen or not in that moment. With, with the practices at IB, say, what IB says is that you need to actively participate and vet how you are thinking about issues in class. So in essence, you're, you have to participate to be an IB student. And so we're asking our students to become actively engaged in their own learning, and that comes with that some responsibility. They have to take responsibility for their learning. And so I guess it's harder in that regard. But work is hard, and life is hard, and anything worthwhile that you do in life takes some level of hard work. So thinking is hard. We're asking them to think. I would like kids to be tired a little bit after being at school, to be honest, from thinking.
And do you have some, it's a great answer, by the way, thank you. Do you have some confidence that what Joan and her team, and Bethany and her team are going to be doing, that they'll be preparing kids to work hard and to think? Because we, what we don't want is the trend, a kid to go from, for example, MineIt to the middle school and be in shock.
Well, that's my next presentation that you'll hear in five minutes, maybe.
Then I will enjoy that one.
Sorry.
Don't, don't apologize. And then the last question I have for the moment is, it's an extraordinary list of accomplishments behind you.
It's an extraordinary team.
And I mean that sincerely. And I know you're the last person to take credit for it, and I know it took a tremendous number of people from the superintendent on down to make that happen. My question is, how does, how does a school committee member, how would you want a school committee member to judge whether all those accomplishments have produced success? to judge whether all those accomplishments have produced success? What is the measurement by which all those things, which on the surface all look great, how do we know that they've actually had the impact on kids?
Data.
Right. And what kind of data do you think we should look at in order to make that judgment?
All data.
All data.
Any data that we collect. We collect data with FAST assessments. We collect, we're going to start a preschool assessment, very detailed, 47. It's called developmental benchmarks. We've got, so we have that data. We do that three times a year. We have summative and formative data. We have anecdotal data. We have all kinds of data that is important.
So will there be a, to coin a phrase, a data dump at some point where you'll present the data that says, you know, all those accomplishments that we were very proud of, here's the data that says that it had an impact? Will there be a presentation like that sometime in the next three or four months?
In about three minutes.
A wha-
You'll see the beginning of that conversation.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But yes. I don't know that it'll happen on MCAS specifically.
Right. I understand.
But we will have enough of other data to support our level of success regardless, and I assume that that will just follow suit. But if it doesn't, we'll have enough data, on the other hand, to prove that our kids are incredible and our team is working tremendously hard to make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, the next presentation.
So this is, this is my third year with the Wareham Public Schools as first the Director of Curriculum and now Assistant Superintendent. And in that three years, we've put some data systems in place that have been able for us to track certain areas of success and, and challenge with our younger students. Since I was an assistant principal and team chair at an elementary school, I learned a great deal about young children and that I was always rather confused about why we didn't put more resources or more energy into form- formulating the necessary skills that young children need in order to be successful. Because as many people know, the longer kids go without these skills, the, the larger the gap becomes, and it makes it less able for them to then learn as they move ahead. The gap gets wider and wider, and they struggle. So when I started to collect this data three years ago, the first year, 60% of our kindergarten students walked into our schools, 60% below the norm. The year after that, it was 50%, followed by 60%. So now I have three years of a pattern of data that's been, that says to me that when our kids walk through the door in kindergarten, they are significantly below the norm, or the amount of students are significantly below the norm, which is concerning. Because if you're trying to intervene, you're intervening with a lot of kids. It's not a small group, right? It's, it's half or greater than half of our population need help, need assistance. And I had heard some stories about the implementation of RTI. I'm not a big supporter of RTI because I felt as though it still separated kids. It brought them to other places to learn, right? They weren't in with their peers, and then it became somebody else's responsibility, right? So there, there were some issues with that model, the Tier Two intervention model, that concerned me. Not to say, and, and another thing that concerned me was that teachers were asked to intervene. You've got to fix it. But no one's taught teachers the specific way and how to diagnose a student and then choose the right intervention for that particular diagnosis. No one's trained teachers to do that. It's not part of teacher education programs. We can guess. We have a slew of information. We can try this or try that, but it's never guaranteed that that's going to work. And if it doesn't work, and you've intervened for 20 days, that's 20 days gone out of the 180 that we have. So after thinking about this and looking at data, there are some things that we have done overall in the last couple of years to try to rectify some of that. One of the, that seemed that fluency, reading fluency was kind of flat. And so we, we went to the teachers and we talked to the teachers, and they expressed an interest in Foundations as a program for, to practice fluency. So we purchased a Foundations program for kindergarten and grade one this year, and we've tracked the data. Is it working? Is it the right thing? Are we, are we reaching where we need to be to get those kids where, where they're at norm? Where they're okay? And it was working, but it wasn't just, it wasn't everything, and it wasn't everyone. And so I was then introduced to a person who actually was a special education director. And she came, she started to come. Now, Deacon, we wanted her to come earlier, Deacon, but of course, Deacon, poor Deacon. I mean, the roof was falling down, and they're moving all about. And, you know, to introduce them to a new person, and we just had to be really careful about how we were going to roll this out and what it meant for teaching and how, and the kindergarten staff have been completely amazing because they've taken on Focus on K2, Foundations, a new math program, right? So they're, and they're, they're really digging in, and they're looking at all of these elements. They're trying really hard to get kids where they need to be. And we know we need to get them there. By the end of grade one, they need to be where they have to be. So we don't have a lot of time. So this woman came in, and she happened to be an expert at, at diagnosing where kids were developmentally and neurologically, but not only diagnosing them, or at least having an idea of where they were through their presentation, but also finding the right intervention. So she began to teach teachers, our teachers, how to use those interventions to then influence our kids' ability for literacy specifically. Math, they do much better when they're little, less abstract. And they're doing really nice. They're having nice gains in math. But reading is a little bit more difficult for our younger learners. So she started in March. We, we tested kids with a DRA, which is a, a measure that's been statistically vetted. It's been proven to be a good measure, a solid measure, where we'd be able to see if it works for kids. And so Joanne and Linda and a few other people went in and tested all of the kindergarten kids in February. Carrie came in, Carrie Thurston is her name. She came in. She did some professional development on a half-day. We got it started, set up the intervention groups based on the DRA data. And these are the amount of students. We did about 20 to 25 days of intervention, and then we retested with the DRA again. We did another set of intervention about 20 days, and we just finished our last testing for DRA. And this is the first time I've seen these kind of results in any of our testing. So it's very exciting because it seems as though we found something that is working for our students, for what they need in order to gain the skills that, to have them ready. We still note, though, that there were some kids that were still not quite ready for first grade. And as a result of that, we've created a summer program for our kindergarten kids that are, are struggling a bit. And they're in a five-week program that's, teachers went to professional development around that, and will be participating in that program this summer. And the goal will be to have them ready at the level they need to be at so that they can participate with their peers in grade one. So if you look at the numbers and the DRA scores and the percentages of each of those, those numbers were converted to percentages. We had 22% meeting target in March. We have 78% meeting target in June. It's pretty substantial gain in our kids' ability through the DRA to be fluent with reading. So we're going to continue this, and because not all of the kids pre-K through four have had exposure to this training and to these resources that have been heavily researched, and she's done a tremendous amount of work and put all of these resources in, in a Google folder and so forth. So they're all available to teachers. And it, the whole point is to embed this practice in daily life, so it's not a separate pull-out. It's embedded practices using centers and the other things that they're already familiar doing. We want to change kids' lives and make sure that they can read at grade level as they move. And we have to do, we have to have ambitious growth for our kids. It's, it can't be less than ambitious because of where they come in, when they arrive. So next year, the professional development question that you asked about, she'll be coming. And what she does is she'll come for a little bit of time, but then she'll come to the schools, and she works in the classrooms. She works with kids and with teachers and models, but also works personally with them, and it seems to help. And they've, seems to be making a difference in the professional development. So it's not a separate professional development either. It's embedded within the practices of our day-to-day school life. And it's really taking advantage of every moment. So we're very excited about this opportunity. I want to make sure that our kids all the way up are ready and prepared. It's a challenge, big goal, but with this, with these results, I, I believe we'll get there. That's how we're preparing them.
You can go. Your chair, you go.
Okay, I'll go first. Is this working? Yeah. The data is so powerful. And the research using science, neuroscience, that, you're right, it's not taught in college. And it, it's an area that hadn't been looked at before. And it's just unbelievable that this is what we're doing here, and you've been able to bring this, you know, to us. And we can see the results in the data, so looking forward to hearing more next year.
Me too. Thank you.
I want to make sure I understand what this is saying. The first, the first graph, the one we're seeing there.
The percentages?
Are number of students, and the second graph is percentage of students, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The orange graph, the first group of the orange, number of students is fine. It doesn't matter whether it's percentage or not. The first group was the result of the first test prior to intervention.
Correct.
Okay. So what is, what is the second group grouping? The one, the one that has?
April?
Well, it says less than A, A, 1, 2, 3 plus.
Okay. That's on a continuum. So a minus A is in trouble, really in trouble as a student. A is still in trouble, and the goal is to get 3 and above to be prepared for grade one, according to the DRA.
Okay. So the orange group, if you add all those numbers together in the final group, it's, it's much larger than the, than the less than A, right?
You mean a 3 plus?
The 3 plus group is a, is a fairly large group.
Not if you take, February's orange, and if you take all kids 1 and below, in orange.
So I should add all the oranges together, correct?
Well, the, what you, what you want to look at is that 37 students were 3 plus out of 164 at the time of testing.
Three and 3 plus-
37 were 3 plus.
And that's a good, and that's a good thing.
Excellent. There are 164 students.
Understood.
We need all of our students there to go to first grade.
Clearly. So your concern is the, is the fact that every group that's less than 3 plus, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's in the orange.
Or the green or the yellow.
Yeah, every group, I'm trying, which is, which is, which students are, are those students in, individually in each bar?
Yes. Those are individually, individual students that fit into that bar.
Okay. And in June, we have a lot more greens, which is post-intervention.
Correct.
Correct.
Post-two interventions, two cycles.
Two, two interventions. We have a lot more greens. But, but where are those students in February? Because the absolute numbers are so much smaller.
They're amongst the rest of them. The 50, the 38, they're all, there's, if you take all of the students-
All of the orange bars and-
And the, and the yellow.
All of the orange bars and all of the yellow bars and all of the green bars, okay? Add up to the same number of students?
No. There were 164 students calculated in the first round of testing in February, and there were 162 students. Two kids moved.
You said 160-
In June.
You said 160-something?
64, yes.
So 164, so all of the orange bars add up to 164?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. So in the second round of testing in April.
Yeah, they do.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
All those yellows add up to the same 164, correct?
In April?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then all the greens.
162.
So you lost a couple somehow. Okay. Like, okay. So the group that was less than A in June has shrunk. Excuse, the group that was 3, the group that in June was tiny, less than A.
Correct.
And now is very large. Correct?
Say that again. Sorry.
No, it's, it's my fault. The less than A in June.
Is tiny compared to what it started at, yes?
Yes.
Which is good.
I, I get that.
Okay.
These, these results are almost too good to be true. That's what I'm struggling with.
I understand.
It is, you just don't see this happening over the course, over the space of
50 days.
Four months, four months, maybe three months, depending on when the-
Correct.
Who did the testing?
Joanne and Linda did the majority of the testing, same testing, same people, not classroom teachers.
Not the classroom teachers.
Not the classroom teachers. And we're putting a SWAT team together to continue that practice, and none of the classroom teachers will do the testing. It's very exciting.
It's extraordinary.
It is extraordinary. I'm hesitantly saying it's extraordinary.
It doesn't happen.
It's going to happen in Wareham. It has to happen.
In four months, you, what is the grade level difference between someone less than A and someone 3 plus?
I, two years?
Two years.
Probably.
So you're saying you moved that many kids?
The teachers did with their strategies. I did not.
Okay. But you moved kids two years in, in three months.
Mm-hmm.
Joanne?
Less than, less than A is generally students coming in less than A are more of a preschool level. Our kindergarteners, we start testing them at a level A around December because that's when they're developmentally ready. that's when they're developmentally ready to take that developmental reading assessment. We hope that at the end of first grade, they, um, sorry, kindergarten, they would reach a level 3, if not higher. We had some students that were hitting a 12 and above.
Yes.
First grade, they start out of the gate with a level 4. So, the expectation-
Would you move to the mic, please?
You have to come.
I've never seen anything quite so extraordinary.
I have all the data, I have all the testing sheets. I saved them. You can come see them. So, what I was explaining was a less than A, that's a preschool level. We start out of the gate with an A booklet in approximately December, because that's when most kindergarteners are ready to show us that they can read. I mean, they've learned their letter sounds. They're picking up words here and there. They're identifying patterns in books. So, they start with a level A. If they pass A, we give them the book 1, then we give them 2. Our expectation is that in June, they walk out of kindergarten at a 3, and if we get them higher, great. And what I was saying was, we had several students that tested even higher than a 12. We stopped at 12, but we could have kept going with some of our students.
I understand that. But what you're saying is to go from less than A to 3 plus is two grade levels.
It's, it's really that, that year. It's set up, so, the DRA is set up to, um, they'll, they'll set ranges. So, for kindergarten, we want to take them A to a 3 or 4. First grade, they want to go from a 4 to about a 16 or an 18. By the end of second grade, we want them at a 28 or a 30.
But now you're suggesting that during kindergarten, to go from less than A to 3 is normal?
That is the expectation.
That is it. So-
That's 3 plus, though.
Okay.
There's a lot of kids that are above that 3.
Above that 3, yeah.
A lot. And I don't know the exact number, but I definitely could pull it for you.
So, is, are you suggesting this is less dramatic than I'm, than I'm-
No, the results are dramatic, but they're, but, but if you think about where our kids come in and all of the struggles and what, what they endure before they get here and they come, we, I don't know that we've been able to find the right intervention match for the kids that come through the door with the, with what they come with. And because we found someone to help us diagnose properly and understand the developmental neurological thoughts of kid, little kids, and the strategy to help them and vetted, those vetted strategies to help them, and matching that is key. Because then you're actually saying to, you're telling, you're helping the student the way that they learn, and you're not trying to do something that they're not ready to be familiar with. You're helping them with their brain, connecting those thoughts.
My turn?
Yes.
Um, so, I, I just want to say, it brings me back a little ways, because I was part of a SWAT team a long time ago. I was part of the John Silber Grant, which was the, I called the stepchild of the Reading First Grant. And within that intensive training, there was the example of how children who were given the interventions, brains differed from those that didn't have, or, um, no, I'm sorry, ones that were good readers and ones that were not. The brain patterns, how they were different, and then after the intervention, how the brain patterns changed. So, I'm, I'm definitely going to say, I'm glad to see that something very similar is back in the district, because, and Joan was part of it as well. I think she would agree with me that it, it was working, and unfortunately, the grant ended and we weren't able to continue it. So, I'm glad to see it back in the, in the district. The only, a few questions I have is, with the DRA, is it timed?
The DRA is not a timed test.
I, that's what I thought. So, how are we assessing fluency?
Through FAST.
Okay. All right. So, then this really isn't a DRA fluency. I don't understand.
Well, it's just, it's just that element of the DRA. So, fluency as far as quickness is concerned, but the fluency of understanding letters and words and how that forms.
They don't time the students until they reach a level 14.
Okay.
They call it, that's one of the elements of the DRA, and that's how they identify it. So, I just wanted to be clear that that's what measure we were using.
Right. But I, I mean, I personally wouldn't see it as a fluency test. I see it more as, like, doing a running record, seeing how they're doing with decoding, where their errors are.
Yeah, it's actual reading assessment.
Right, right. And they also look at comprehension as well, right? Are you doing that part as well?
That comes in at level 8.
Okay. All right. Then the, the next question I have is, what exactly are the interventions? You talk about interventions. Well, what are they?
Yeah, you go ahead. There's so many.
There are. There's several different interventions. What, the main thing that I like about it is they're happening within the classrooms. So, Ms. Thurston has shared with our teachers several folders on a drive. And basically, it has, once they've identified where the student's weakness is, there's very varied activities that they do. A lot of them involve movement activities. There are activities that have to do with, there's like videos, and they're singing songs, so they're working on rhyming, they're seeing patterns. They're flashing sight words up on the board for the students, and they're saying them quickly. There's a lot of repetition, which helps to build that fluency and get students thinking faster and quicker. Mrs. Russo just handed me one of these. She happened to have it with her. This is one of the things that they do. They create these rings, and the teachers have them with them. And on the rings are different letters. They might ask the student, what's the letter? What's the sound? Then they also have on them their sight words. So, they'll flash them a sight word. And this kind of goes along with our learning anywhere, anytime, because if you walk into our building in the morning, you'll see Ms. Wood standing at the door with these cards as an entrance ticket.
Round her neck.
Flashing them to the kids. Tell me what you know. And Mrs. Johnson, everyone. I mean, everybody's jumping in on this. And it's really helping our students, because they are. They're being exposed to letters, letter names, letter sounds, words, books, that repetition all the time.
Okay, thank you. And then, so, in the classroom, a question I have is, are the parents still in the kindergarten classrooms at all? No?
No.
Okay, so that just makes-
No, but the teaming is helping with that.
Right.
Because with the teachers teaming, they're moving their kids between their classrooms. So, one of the teachers might pull a group in while the other teacher is working on centers, and the kids are rotating around in that classroom. The second teacher would have a group doing a small group intervention.
Okay. And then, you probably already answered my question. Who's providing the interventions? It sounds like it's the teachers.
Mainly the classroom teachers.
Okay. And you also have a Title I, though, teacher, right?
The Title I teachers are highly engaged and involved, and will be when we start introducing it to mine it.
Okay.
And we're looking at our schedule for next year to have Title I focusing more time with kindergarten as well, so that they can go into the rooms and assist with some of the small groups.
Okay, good. And then, my last comment is excellent, you know, great with having the Boost Summer Program. Again, this is something that has been done in the past, but unfortunately, it was never followed through for the next year. So, I'm hoping all these things will be followed through with, because that's, that's where we're going to close the gap.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct. And we're very excited about the opportunity. We're trying to do everything we can to make this first summer brilliant.
Great.
For all involved, and so that it, because once that happens, it sort of creates its own energy, and people insist on it, which helps. So, we've been very busy preparing.
I'm sure. Thank you.
When, you tripled the number of kids meeting target from February to June. There's no control group, correct?
You mean somebody who's not being serviced?
Like prior year. Do we have any idea what might have happened without these interventions in a prior year?
We haven't done a DRA prior to this year of every student in kindergarten. Our first grade teachers, however, the majority of them are familiar with DRAs. And while we don't have everything documented, they will attest and say that they weren't coming in at a 4. So, they felt that they were going back and having to kind of backtrack and teach some of those foundational skills. So, I'm hoping that this year, we'll hear a different report from them.
And we'll have two years of data when we revisit.
It's spectacular, but there's no control group, so we really don't know what would have happened anyway.
Well, I know doing nothing wasn't working.
Got it. I understand.
Does anyone else have a question?
I'm sorry.
Lori.
Is there a number, do you know how many of the kids went to preschool?
Yes, I do have that. There were 32 students that came from preschool. 11 of those were inclusion students. 21 were general education students. In order to compare the data, though, I had to, I didn't sift them out of this data. What I did do is I analyzed the, the 21 students that were general education students, because in order to at least kind of have a fair assessment of that group. And that, those numbers, the green percentage was 90% versus the 78, which says to me that, so that 78 in green was 90 for the 21 students. And that's what we're shooting for, for next year with a full year implementation. We'd like everybody at, we'd like that 90% number. And it's a big goal, and I understand that, but we're shooting for 90%. We'd like it to be 100, to be honest. But of those, so, so that indicated to me that it, that the, being prepared to learn in preschool is so important for students' acquisition of learning as they move ahead. And so, we're spending time, a significant amount of time. I've already spoke to the preschool teachers, and they're rather excited about it. But we're going to spend significant time there as well. And then the OWLS curriculum, they feel that they implemented fully this year, which follows the Focus K2, or precedes the Focus K2 curriculum. They feel has been very rich for their kids this year in literacy. So, when they enter, we'll be able to track them and see how, if that has had an impact on their ability to, you know, to get where we need them to go. So, we're definitely on a good, I think we've got some good structures in place. It's a matter of just making sure we're collecting the right data. And ambitious growth is key. And I think many of the people in the presentations mentioned about, you know, data team meetings and looking at the data. The data is complicated. Children are complicated. So, there are many different ways to look at it. And FAST is a very rich, it's a robust system, and we're really digging in to figure out, how do we help our kids make ambitious growth? Because really, essentially, that's what we need to happen to. So, this isn't our only data. We're looking at all kinds of data, because it's important, obviously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Big evening for you, too.
Lot of work from everyone. Thank you so much.
Great job, Dikis.
Acceptance of a gift, yes.
Okay.
Um, I would rec, I would recommend acceptance of a gift from members of the Culinary Arts Class and Club for $500 raised and deposited in Student Activities account to be donated to the Trey Miranda Memorial Scholarship for next year's scholarship. So, I'd ask the committee for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Just a quick question. Where did the money, this, where did the money come from to be put into the, the Student Activities account?
How did they raise the $500?
Yeah.
Is your question? They put on a tremendous lunch, once a week, that teachers can purchase. And I would suggest that if any committee, people are available on, I believe it's Friday. Is that right, Michelle?
I, that's when we can order it.
Yes. We would be happy to share the delicacies with you, because it's very nice.
Very nice. Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
5-0-0.
Thank you. All right. We have three payrolls. June 10th in the amount of $159,306.37. Payroll ending June 17th in the amount of $3,311,725.75. And payroll for the 29th in the amount of $168,713.30. And I would qualify the payroll for June 17th in the $3 million. That is the five checks that we distribute to educators as they leave.
You don't mean $3 million?
I do mean $3 million.
It's 10 weeks worth of pay.
Yeah, yeah.
To all the teachers, the lump sum for the entire summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's scary, isn't it? So, I would ask for approval.
One at a time?
All three would be fine.
All three. Have a motion? You're good at this. Give me the motion.
Move approval for the payroll warrants as stipulated by the superintendent.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
Thank you. Bill Warren in June 22nd in the amount of $109,025.7. And Bill Warren on the 29th of June in the amount of $121,598.93.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
And next,
$3 million.
I'd like to talk about nominations for the Mass Association of School Committees. And I am very honored. I would like to tell you that we are nominated two of ours, and we'll see if they, if they are accepted. But the first one is the Lifetime Achievement Award. And I would like your vote on this. For Dr. Clifford Sylvia, "The Reasons for Placing His Name in Nomination: A Lifetime Career and Volunteer in the Education Field and a Commitment to Students of the Town." He had many, many community activities. He served on the school committee for many years in different capacities and very, the subcommittees of the school committee, negotiation subcommittees, budget advisory, curriculum reviewing, technology, strategic plan, community service, learning partnership board. He was part of the MASC and MASC joint conferences and the NSBA conferences exposition. His other accomplishments are many. He's a retired high school teacher, department chair for Wareham Public Schools for 31 years. And while he was here, he established the nationally recognized DECA program at Wareham High School. Coach, he was a coach for boys' and girls' basketball and girls' softball. He was a class advisor. He is advisory to DECA, yearbook, accountant, athletics, extracurriculum. And he assisted with the academic decathlon team. He was also an adult education teacher and assistant principal in Wareham. And also, he was an assistant principal in sandwich public schools, and accountant, accounting instructor in the evening program at Cape Cod Community College, Chapter 74 Comprehensive Program Evaluation at Old Colony Regional Vocational High School, part of the Evaluation Committee for NIAS, chair and member of the MASC DECA District One Advisory Committee, Wareham Education Association Teachers Union, Ways and Means Committee, Vice President, co-chair negotiations. And he was educator of the year for 1982, '83. He served on the Board of Directors for Plymouth County Teachers Federal Credit Union. He has a doctorate in education, a master's in science of business education, and a master of education. So, I would like a motion to nominate Dr. Clifford Sylvia for the Lifetime Achievement Award.
Some moved.
May I have a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0. Next, MASC has a-
Aye. Five zero zero. Next, MASK has an all-state school committee for an outstanding school committee, and I would like to nominate Jeffrey Sweat. Wareham School Committee, eleven years of service. While on this committee, he has held the positions of Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary. He's been on the Town Audit Committee, the Cape Cod Collaborative Board of Directors, the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, Mine at Forest Building Committee, Wellness Committee, Negotiation Subcommittee, Superintendent's Emergency Planning Advisory Committee, Policy Review Committee, Teacher Administrator Evaluation Subcommittee, Strategic Plan Review 2005, Strategic Planning Committee 2016.
That just means I'm old.
Transportation Committee 2010, Transportation Action Committee 2012, and the Curriculum Subcommittee. His occupational background, educational background, I know Harvard University. I don't have, I know you, it wasn't in there. I thought it was. Harvard University, class of seventy-one.
Now I'm really old.
Same as me. I didn't go to Harvard, though. Occupational background, Health Administrator, retired from biomedical applications at Brockton, President and Chief Operating Officer at Advantage Schools, Inc., owns and operates charter public schools. Part two, the community involvement. 2008 Superintendent Screening Committee, 2003 Superintendent Screening Committee, Finance Committee 2003. The school committee professional development workshops and conferences, he always goes to that MASK, that day on the hill, brings students there. And he, he's a voting delegate at the MASK and the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Joint Conference. He's the Division Seven Chair for our association, and he keeps getting it every year. It's great. He does that for us. He's very knowledgeable. No one can fill those shoes. And he's also the 2012 National School Board Association Attended Conference and Exposition. Other activities, school trip to Cape Verde, coach of Wareham High School Girls Tennis Team.
I didn't go to Cape Verde. I went to Costa Rica.
Oh. Oh, I want to go there.
It was a great trip, though.
Substitute school bus driver, Wareham, junior achievement instructor, judge at the Middle School Science Fair, and participant in credit recovery life program for high school seniors. And-
Where'd you get this list from?
Oh, people keep records. It's data. And I would say that he's actively supported the new tennis courts and scholarship for students attending the program at Mass Maritime. So Jeff can't do this nomination, you're going to do it. Do I have a nomination to nominate Jeff Sweat for the all-state school committee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. One abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe-
That's it.
Is there any other business? No other business. Superintendent's Newsletter, you already did everything. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Good night, everyone. Thank you.